All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order at 5:30. Do we get a, oh, no. Councillor Sebold lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by prayer by Councillor Walker. Real call, please.
Councillor Walker.
Present.
Councillor Yoder.
Present.
Councillor Solis.
Present.
Councillor Spencer, excuse, Councillor Sebold.
Present.
Councillor Townsend.
Present.
Mayor Levine.
Present.
Mary Abicorm.
Thank you.
Is there any public comments in the audience, anybody at all? Anybody on Zoom wish to make their voices heard? Here and now, we'll move on. I see the Amendment to the Agenda to remove item number five. Any other amendments to the agenda? You've not entertained a motion?
I move that we accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Shoot unanimous, thank you. Under the consent agenda. Well, that makes that easy. All right, this may be a short meeting. All right, okay, I'll keep it going so we don't make up for last time on the consent agenda. Number one, the US 97 Earl de Colfax project, Jeff.
Okay, so in your packet, there is an asset access management strategy. And this is put together by ODOT, and they do this as part of their projects when they're going through and they're proposing changes to accesses on up and down along the highways. And so what it is, is they go through and they identify every access point along the project limit. And then what they're proposing for changes, they identify what they're planning to do. And part of this is, is they ask for city buy-in. And so they ask us to sign on to this so that we're part of it and we're made well aware of it. So ODOT sent this to me and I have them online tonight if you guys have questions. I have Carrie Charlton, she's with the project manager, and I have Caleb Stevens, he's the right-of-way agent who was working on this. And so I know I'm gonna botch most of this and so they can correct me when I mess this up. But for the most part, what I did was, because there's a lot of access points on this upcoming project, so I took and I tried to summarize and then in this highlighted table here showing what I saw that were really changes, because there was a lot of them that were no changes, no changes, no changes, no changes, right? And so I highlighted all the ones for everybody to look at. And then I took their map that they had and I tried to summarize and just break it down to three pages of where the big, oh, wait, no, five, five pages, and highlighted the ones that were really changing. So then you guys could focus in, because it's a huge document, they have to identify everyone. So basically, as part of the project, we have to sign off on this, then ODOT approves this, and then this gives them their direction and sets where their, all their right-of-way files are gonna be for required and right-of-way moving forward. So tonight, it's a discussion of going through this, if, you know, if council is okay with it, or if they have questions, or if they, you know, need more information. We kind of have it on here as, you know, ask away, if we need to come back, we can. They, ODOT wants to try to keep this moving forward if they can, so hopefully it could be approved tonight. But of course, I know this is always a sensitive topic, because we're talking about accesses to existing businesses. So I have it on here that we can talk about it, ask questions. We get there and we decide we're okay, we'll approve, otherwise, you know, we can always get more information or anything you need explained. So with that, I'll just leave it there. Ask me any questions, or we can have Carrie or Caleb, too.
Scotty, a quick correction for you there, Jeff. This doesn't set where the right-of-way files are, that's a separate process. This is just setting where the proposed changes to access are. Sometimes they're associated with the right-of-file, sometimes they're not. The right-of-way file is gonna be a separate process. And then one thing I wanted to just add in, since this is kind of a different process than what the city would follow, is that we did send a mailing to everyone in the project limits, is the draft access management methodology. That sets the criteria by which we make the decisions. And then what we have here is our proposed decisions. And so everyone will get a letter again, and they will have an appeal right, because we're following Division 51, which is the rules that dictate how we go forward, so.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay, I cannot hear you, maybe you muted.
I muted.
Okay.
Quite sure. Let's go.
Hi, May. Hi, May, this is Carrie. I'm just wondering, are you able to hear us and come off of mute as well? I'm wondering if we got kicked out of the meeting, because it doesn't seem that we're in the council meeting any longer.
I couldn't, I could hear Caleb, but then I couldn't hear anyone else.
Okay, yeah, that's what happened for all of us. It seems like all three of us got kicked out. Not, not, not really sure what happened there. Oh.
There we go.
Okay.
They're back.
Every business owner or business throughout this entire vast project here has considerable interest in this. And I really want to make sure that they are heard. I know some places we can't accommodate them. But I also know that ODOT's the 800-pound gorilla and we're just peons. And sometimes they do things that are good for them, but not good for the tenant or landowner. So I would want to make sure that they are heard and they're fairly treated. And that the city, if we feel like they're being pushed a little further than they should be on the access thing, that the city would be on their side as well as doing what's right for the city and its tenants. So that's my concern, thank you.
Anyone else?
I would agree with Councillor Walker. Looking through this, we're closing a lot of driveways, it looks like. Doing a lot of reconstruction of other driveways. I'd be concerned about how involved the community was in that, and the landowners and business owners within this stretch of the highway. I don't know how we can go about putting that information out there or receiving feedback, though, and I'd probably put that to Will or Jeff.
So I don't know if you guys can hear me again, we kind of got a little technical issue for a minute there, but I think I can answer that. We identified the owners that had significant changes or alterations, and I reached out to almost all of them, there were a few I wasn't able to reach, you can contact them, but most of these folks do know what's going on. We've had conversations about their properties and what their current uses and future plans are. And then we follow Division 51, which dictates the process. And so we have criteria we gotta look at when we make these decisions. The property owners are aware of those criteria. And then the next step is they'll get the notice and they'll have an appeal period if they disagree or they have an issue. And then there's a whole formal appeal process where we meet and go through with them if that does happen. So I believe, you know, this shouldn't come as a surprise to any of the owners.
I would question how many people you haven't been able to reach, because as a property owner on this list, I've owned property on this list since October, and the list shows it as a different owner. So I would ask where you're getting the information.
So yes, this project's been going on for a while. And that initial outreach and the methodology that happened last year. So if you were a new owner in October, you weren't part of that initial discussion. With that said, you know, if you are on that list and you'd like to talk to me, I'd be happy to set up some time where we could do that outside of this meeting.
Right, I'm not concerned with mine, because mine is a minor change, so you probably wouldn't have reached out to me anyway. But what about anything that's changed in the last six to nine months from when you guys gathered that? If you haven't made contact with somebody, are you making a point to see if the ownership has changed or something, so somebody doesn't get blindsided?
We do try and stay on top of it, you know, I'm not promising we couldn't have made, you know, missed something down the road. But the new owner would get the letter, they'd get the notification, you know. And if we found out we missed someone, we'd work through that process, because we have an obligation under Division 51 for notification. And so that's what these mailings and the outreach is meant to accomplish, to meet that obligation.
Caleb, could you talk through, like, just and kind of talk about some of the conversations you've had, if you're allowed to? Because I know some of this stuff is like, you have to negotiate with the property owner. But can you talk through, like, some of the conversations, like you had with maybe the Ofco and an S tractor, I don't know, you can kind of explain to them, like, what you have done, kind of the process you've been going through.
Sure, yeah, I called the managers over there, I met with them. You know, we chatted about the accesses and, you know, we're really trying to understand how they use their property and what their plans are and tenant, their use. So when we make the decisions, we're making informed choices. We're trying to balance the needs of the public and operating the highway system and the improvement projects we need to do with the current, you know, economic use of those properties. So it's a balance, not everyone's gonna be happy, but we take their feedback into consideration and do what we can. You know, it doesn't always mean we can give them everything they want, you know, there's a compromise. But we try and reach out and, you know, that's the whole point of this process. And the next step, when the decisions are made, or the proposed decisions are proposed, I should say, there is that appeal right. So if someone really disagrees and can't see it eye to eye, they get that additional opportunity. So our goal, though, initially is just to make that contact and get a good understanding of what's going on on the property, so we're making informed decisions.
Caleb, is there any reason that you need the city council's approval on this before that appeal period is over?
The idea is that it shows we're all in alignment and that you are supporting our decisions. And then, once we go forward, you know, if we have to adjust, you know, that's all part of the process, and we'll follow what Division 51 says. And I personally have not gone through an appeal, it's pretty uncommon. We would have to set up some additional time to speak with our access management engineer, if we wanted to go into more detail on that process.
Just another comment I brought to mind when you brought up NS Tractor. I know that loading and unloading, a lot of times there'll be a rancher with a 35 or 40-foot cattle trailer in there and wanting to load up some stuff. And, and it might, if you close off those two side accesses, he won't be able to drive through the backyard anymore. It may, may cause some issues. Also, if things are closed up and changed, and it changes the way that a person's business operates, and people don't, I mean, will there be any remuneration of any kind for loss of of access? Or, you know, will they be compensated in any way, or?
So in the state of Oregon, accesses are not compensable. It's a regulatory authority of, you know, the state for operating the highway system. And that's the whole point of this process, is that we do have the ability to work with the owner. They have an appeal right, so like, everyone has their say. If there is additional right-of-way impact, that's a separate process, and that negotiation is handled separately. And with relocating accesses, that often comes with a right-of-way file. So that's the additional opportunity for the owner to work with us and address any issues they have. But there's, you know, established court rulings about access and what is compensable and what is not. And everything is operating through the permit. And I did speak, you know, since we're talking about NS, you know, I spoke with their manager, and we discussed circulation and how people get in and out. And so hopefully, we worked through those issues already, so.
Okay, just want you to know that as a citizen, we'll be keeping an eye on that, so thank you.
Sure. And, you know, the goal is everyone gets notified and has representation, right? So that's the whole point of Division 51 and the process we're going through, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
So just a question, so I know you're contacting the property owners, but what about the tenant that's in the property, say the business? Have you been contacting the businesses? Because they're gonna be the ones that are probably impacted more by it than the property owner, if it's a lease.
That would be between the property owner and the tenant, unless they specifically have requested we reach out, or they are the same. The property owner is the one with the legal rights to, you know, the property and how everything operates. So hopefully, the owner's been working with their tenants. Often cases, the owner, you know, runs the business, that's not always the case. But that's kind of between the tenant and the landowner.
So I have a question structurally. I keep thinking of the scenario, once construction starts, is there gonna be a central emergency point of contact? You know, as things are happening, there's equipment, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You might run into unforeseeable circumstances. But my only concern is that, you know, if they're gonna call the city, and then we're gonna call you, and it's gonna be this weird game of telephone, very inefficiently designed structurally. So hopefully, you guys have a point person and, you know, Business A can call you directly and say, hey, I need to move this truck through here, can you, you know? So is that, is that typically your modus operandi? If not, can we set it up that way? So I just want to have.
Yeah, we do have a point person in the construction office who will kind of be running all that and coordinating. And we have a internal coordination before it goes out to the contractor, where I work with our construction office and hand over any notes or any information that needs to be known before they go out there and start work. So we do have that coordination. Anyone that has a right-of-way file will have a contacted ODOT for the right-of-way office, and, you know, we'll help them get to the right place or help them out if it's something that's not our ballpark. And, you know, we work closely with construction. So I, we aim for that, and we try and set it up so that is a possibility. And if someone calls you guys instead, you know, we'll give that number to Jeff. He has our, my number, he's got the constructions office number, so he can definitely kind of move things along very quickly.
Great, thank you.
Anybody have any other questions or comments?
I guess I would just say, do we, as a council, see any benefit waiting, or do we want to just go ahead and move forward? I mean, what, how's everybody feeling?
I think we go ahead, I mean, it has to be done, and we'll work through whatever comes up, because in the long run, it's truly best for our community.
I'm okay with moving forward unless somebody has a strong objection personally.
You entertain a motion, then?
So I have a question. Do you think it might be good for us to have businesses invite the business owners in to talk to the council about it? Because so we could hear, I mean, there's obviously some people that have been maybe not notified.
I think they've identified a process that they have to go through, and then we should, they should be going through ODOT for that, because it is their project, so if they have a concern, are they following ODOT's process? I hear what you're saying, and I think it would be great if we're the middle person, but we're not making the decision. We want to say, hey, you have some concerns, here's the contact number for ODOT, I would think, because we really don't have a say in it, do we?
It is our process through our district office and the permitting authority we've been given to run the highway system. You know, we're just trying to do what we can to work with you guys as our partner and build consensus. And, you know, if there is disagreements, you know, we do have an outline process for how that is handled. So I would, I would agree with what you just said.
I will say this, I think you're hard stepping in the right spot, Lamar. I almost think that it's not either our proposition. I think we can invite them in and hear their concerns, so that we can represent them and make they feel like we understand. But we can also move concurrently with the process, because there's probably nothing they're gonna say that's gonna prevent us from passing it. So I think you're, I think you're right, I think we should do that, so that they don't feel like we're just saying good luck with ODOT. So I like your idea.
Well, it's just because I've heard from a number of businesses saying how much this is gonna hurt their business, and they want to know what we're gonna do about it. So that's why, I know it's been discussed, but I haven't seen any real real, any action on that, what we're actually gonna do when it does happen. So I don't, I mean, I know it's inevitable, inevitable, some businesses, you're gonna lose traffic, you're gonna lose business, I know you will. But what can we do, talking to our businesses, to figure out how we can help them in a better way than to just say, okay, here we are, sign it, and talk to ODOT about it? Because I think that's a good way to get people agitated.
Well, I think there's two parts to what's going on there, because there's the construction-related impact, and this is just kind of the access plan that allows us to proceed with our design, so we know what the changes are gonna be. And maybe Carrie will have, is the project manager, has a little additional information about how construction coordination and that actual construction impact will be handled.
You took the words right out of my mouth, Caleb.
Thanks, Caleb, for the lead-in there. Yeah, good evening, Carrie Charlton, I'm the project manager, so I'm overseeing the design portion of the project. And we'll hand this over to our construction office once we hit our bid and construction. But we do have a process like Caleb had highlighted earlier. We are coordinating on right-of-way, on access, on traffic control. And I think it's been a while since we've come to council with the full project scope. I've, I've had many conversations with many business owners and property owners throughout the downtown section specifically. There were major concerns when we were rebuilding, basically, all of the roads outside of what the J Street project there at the south end had accomplished previously. With our current funding that we have right now, we're only, we're paving up north on 26 and 97. But once you hit the couplet, the downtown section, we're rebuilding the first two blocks on the southbound lane, so between Pine and B Street. So there'll just be two blocks of reconstruction at that location. So the scope of the project has been reduced drastically. We are still upgrading all the ADA curb ramps within the project. So there will be work at all of the corners of the project, but not necessarily repaving or digging up the roadway. There may be some shifting of traffic here and there, but for the most part, the major construction will be at the north end outside of the downtown, and then those first two blocks as you're entering into the couplet. And what we foresee for coordination with the public, not unlike some of our other projects, when we were impacting businesses, there'll be a single point of contact, like Caleb mentioned, with our construction office, that you can reach out to business owners anytime with questions. We and other projects have asked our contractors to canvas the area when they're gonna be working in that location with a notice to all the business owners or property owners, letting them know when construction is coming, what traffic control would look like. We're required to provide access to every property during construction. So we can't just close an access and say, you know, good luck, property owner or business owner. We would have to, let's say, construct half of their access at a time, so that they still had access to the property. Any other questions, or does that summarize maybe what you were wondering under the construction portion and coordination with the public?
Yeah, I think that answers my questions.
One thing I was gonna ask, Carrie, were we gonna do, I know as, we were talking about doing another, like, open house or something to kind of update everybody on the project, and maybe at that time, we can bring it updated, and we can invite all the business owners and have a full-blown, like, one hour to our open house sort of thing.
Yeah, absolutely, so that's what we're shooting for. You know, this has been a pretty iterative process of matching our funding with the scope. So what can we build with the money that we have? And we're at that point in time when we're like, okay, we think that we have the amount, we know that we're not getting additional funds from ODOT. So if there's an outside source that comes in, that's one thing. But we have a set scope, and now we're ready to come out to the public. We were shooting for this spring sometime. And of course, we could do a couple of those, if we wanted to have a daytime one and an evening time one. But we would have exhibits that would show the scope of the project. We could have ODOT there, the city, to answer any questions and really just laying out what is included, what will be included in the construction project. So our website that we have, you know, you can get to ODOT's website, or you can always just Google ODOT US 97 Madras Project, and it's gonna pop up. And we have exhibits on our website for the project that show the scope, so the current scope of the project. And the people that have reached out to me from the downtown, I've directed them to that website, and they've taken a look at what the scope is. And they'll either have a question, or, oh, I no longer have a concern, my business is outside of the area that you're paving now. So our website is up to date with the current project scope, but we do want to hold that open house here this spring.
Okay, I move that council approved the US 97 slash US 26 Earl Street to Colfax Lane Access Management Strategy Agreement and authorized the city administrator to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Discussion.
Thank you.
Discussion on the, yes? Discussion on the proposed rate increase for Madras Sanitarium as well.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, before you is a discussion item related to a request from the President of Madras Disposal for a rate increase, its graduated rate increase on the high end. It is 12% for the smaller carts, medium-sized carts is 10%, 8% for the larger cart customers. In the staff report, outlined that in November of last year, council approved a franchise agreement that had two clauses in it where Madras Disposal could request a rate increase. The first is directly to me, the second is an extraordinary rate increase, which you might call this. And that is why this item is before you for your discussion and consideration. You will note in the staff report that I did ask Melanie at the time why this was not included in the actual franchise agreement at the time. She said that she was working diligently with all of you prior to my arrival to work through the pieces of this. And she was trying to finalize what that looked like. Two pieces of information that might help the discussion tonight is that council did ask for a franchise fee increase from 5% to 7%. And the second is, there was an additional cost increase related to the insurance requirements that we asked them. So I turn it back to you, Mayor, and Melanie with Madras Disposal was in the audience tonight.
I'm good. I mean, product of the times that we're in.
What was that?
Said it's a product of the times that we're in. Said it's a product of the times that we're in. We see it in our suit, our own sewer bill and our own water bill and everything. It's, I mean, it's unfortunate, but it has to happen.
Well, it is, it is unfortunate and it's, we knew that the different things that the city was asking them increasing our franchise fee and increasing the insurance, we knew that that would eventually come down to increasing our garbage. It just, that's the way business works. So anyways, I wasn't surprised when I saw this either myself. None of us like price increases, but unfortunately we've all been spending more wherever we go the last while, so.
So I'm going to disagree with, uh, my fellow counselors on that. I actually think that this should have been something that was discussed at the time that we were negotiating the contract. I think that the items that are mentioned here as a reason for the rate increase, the franchise fee increase from five to seven and the, uh, additional insurance coverage that we requested and negotiated. They knew at the time what their additional costs were going to be. And this could have been part of their negotiation process that they could have said, yes, we'll agree to your additional franchise fee and the insurance coverage, but we also want to increase our rates accordingly at the time. I don't understand the waiting four months, five months to bring it back to us rather than negotiating it as part of the contract. I think that time would have been more appropriate than now.
Didn't we discuss it though, that it could result in that in the time? I mean, I do remember when we were negotiating that, that it could be passed on and they were looking at more efficiencies in their routes and trying to be as economical as possible, but they did say that it could happen when we negotiated it.
Yes, and I would say that it, we put it in there as language that they could bring it back to us, but I still think that my point stands that it isn't that they have now sudden new unexpected increases in their costs related to the times. It's increases that were, um, known at the time that we were negotiating.
I disagree with that. In fact, I think it was wise ever to do some due diligence and figure out what those actual costs would be rather than just raising it arbitrarily. So, I mean, I don't see a problem with it. It might've been a little faster, uh, to do it before. But now we know what those rates cost. We know fuel's $4 a gallon now. And, uh, you know, all those things cost money. It fuels more than everything else costs more and I'm in favor of it.
Counselor Sable?
Yeah, I mean, it's a tough one. I, I definitely understand where Counselor Sles is coming from. I, I do wish this had been done with the other part, um, as part of an overall package. But I'm also sympathetic being a business owner myself, the costs of everything are going up. So, um, I, I, the more I think about it, I, I think there's nothing we can do other than just go ahead and move forward with, with the rate increase. I would also plant a seed, um, that if we're doing this rate increase now, that, that means that we're going to want to go a while without another rate increase. So, you know, obviously the economy changes, prices change, but we don't want a lot of bites at the apple. So if, if we do this one time hit, then I think it's a, a basic good faith assumption that this is the only rate increase for a bit. We can see how long that plays out as far as market conditions and we don't have total control of that at this point, but I do want to put that caveat in there.
And I think we have to be careful in stating that as we increase our own sewer bills and our own water bills as we are required to. I don't think anybody's out doing rate hikes because they want to, but we're not putting a timeframe on that. You're not proposing that, are you?
No, I didn't. If you listen, yeah, I didn't. I just said as a general axiom, you know, we don't want to come back in three months and then another two months. You know, yeah, it's just kind of a more of a mental way of, of framing it.
So I think just based on what I've heard from you guys, say you guys are going to vote in favor of this. So that being said, I think there needs to be some caveats to it. There's a, given a take on this, there are two different sections in their contract that allow them, I know, I know there's no motion, but just based on what I've heard, I think you guys are all leaning towards a yes. There's verbiage in their franchise agreement that allows them to either take 2% or CPI year over year without coming to us at all. They just have to tell the city administrator, hey, we want to take that and they can get that increased. This ask is outside of that. So if this was approved, they can then turn around and continue to do that year over year. And so we could see this as a 12% increase now and then a 2% and then a two and then a two for the life of the contract. So I would strongly recommend that if we approve this now, it comes with a caveat that they're locked in, that they, we remove that, we're opening up the franchise agreement essentially, that becomes eliminated from the contract. I would also like to open up the option that I discussed when we initially reviewed the franchise agreement to make a stipulation that, um, I'm drawing a blank on the phrasing, but there is an aspect to the, uh, franchise agreement that I wanted specifically tied to, no, not that one, um, but tied to the business as is and can't be sold to another entity. So if Melanie ever decided to take the business and sell it, that it would not carry over into the new franchise agreement. I'm totally drawing a blank on what that was at the moment. I believe so.
I think we have to be very careful on limiting how somebody runs a business, not knowing where the economy is headed. And we don't know where, you know, how much inflation is going to come into play. We cannot, I think we have to be very careful about dictating how much somebody charges for a rate that, or a service that they're delivering.
I agree, uh, as far as future business decisions and potentially selling the business. There was agreement amongst all of us, but because of the way it was written, Jeremy's recommendation was that we could always change that later down the road. If we saw, if we saw fit. We dropped it at the time. I think that it behooves the city and is better for the community if we make that just part of the franchise agreement. If we write it in because we might not all be here in two, three, four, five, six years, right? And so it might be an entirely new council who isn't aware of some of the thought process behind that. And so I think for me, there's two aspects on here that if this gets approved at the 12%, it's just locked in. There's no more increases over the life franchise agreements. Up to the point where you would be at the 12. So that would be what, six years of the franchise agreement? And we add in additional language.
Here's what I would say is, um, I don't think we can, I, I totally get where you're coming from, but we can't, this is a one time increase of 12%. This doesn't counteract the annual inflation increases. I don't think we can horse trade those two things. I think it's just in addition to, so I think the, the annual will go on, uh, whatever the terms are, 2%. That's just to cover the annual inflation. So I don't think it's either or. I think we just take the 12% hit and then we just move forward with the contract, um, as is on that piece.
I think we absolutely can. Because the ask is coming to us for the additional 12% as a rate increase. We can say yes as is, we can say no, or we can say yes with stipulations.
Well, as a certain, at a certain point, if you just annualize it out, she'll actually fall behind where she would have been had she not brought this, just moving forward.
How do you figure that? 12% this year, 2% the next, then you're at a 14 overall and then a 16 the next year.
How many years are you talking now? You're talking about the whole life of the?
Entire life of this.
So it's a one time 12 and then it's 2% every year after that?
Right. So as is, they can just do the 2% whenever. And so they could do that this year. She's asking for us to do the, as we'll put it, as an extraordinary option.
Are you saying just for this year or she can never do a rate increase again? Cause I, I thought you were saying that she can never ra- raise it ever again after this one.
I'm saying that she couldn't for the period of time that it would take her if she just went with the other clause in the franchise agreement, which allows her the 2%.
What year is that through?
That would be six years because 2% year over year.
So you're saying instead of getting six 2% increases, we just do the 12% now and that's it?
Correct.
Yeah. See, that's what I, I don't agree with that.
I don't either. Cause if you take, each time you cut a piece out of that, like 2%, that 2% is far less. I mean, the 12% ends up one figure, but if you take 2% of this and 2% of that and 2% of that, it falls short of the 12% plus. Everyone knows that, that this is just to catch us that we haven't had a rate crease, increase since 2018. 12% is very reasonable. And it moving forward, I mean, I know I got a 3% increase on my social security this year. So I've, I'm making money, you know? But I don't think it's fair to dictate a business. They know what they need. She's been very conservative and mindful of the community as a whole since she's been there. And she probably knows more than us about city government, at least from her experience. I just think she's being fair and that we need to, to let her run her business and not regulate it any more than she's already regulated.
That's the basis of the franchise agreement though, is that we are in a business relationship with Madras Sanitary. And hence also why there's the language within here restricting the rate increases that they can have year over year. It's already regulated. I'm not imposing or dictating how Madras Sanitary runs a business. I think that that is completely out of line for what a city government should do or any government. However, part of the business relationship and part of our job in serving the community and the people who elected us to be here is to ensure that this is in their best interest. I'm not looking at this at the best interest of Madras Sanitary. I'm not looking at this as the best interest of the city of Madras. Because there is no benefit to the city of Madras in this situation if we said yes or no. I'm looking at this as, is this to the benefit of the community and the people that we're serving? There's already the restrictions in here. I think that if we're going to give them this high increase, there needs to be a give on their side for it. That's just a basic business negotiation for me.
I don't, I guess I'm not understanding why you think there has to be a give on their side. I mean, they didn't control their costs, so I'm a little concerned with that. We didn't write it into the franchise agreement and trying to do it now doesn't seem like the right way to do it. It sounds like we didn't get what we wanted when we did the franchise agreement, so we're going to slap it in now. So I just want to make sure that we're not, or is this the?
On both sides. Correct.
No, I don't think so, because I remember the conversation that if this happens, that it's potentially going to go on to our clients depending on the data after we research it.
But there's no necessity for any of us on council to say yes.
Well, I mean, looking out for the public good, we want a healthy garbage company. So we don't gain, but we want, you know, Melanie's company to be healthy. We want them able to buy the right new trucks. We want them to be financially solvent so that they can provide the garbage service. So, you know, yeah, we don't, we don't directly benefit, but we do benefit as a community. You know, the, the utility industry is pretty tightly regulated. And I think a big part of it is ironically, when we talk about percent increases, at least from my perspective, it almost makes it sound more ominous than it is. I mean, I'm just looking at the chart here for a bit as we've been talking and we're talking about a few bucks, uh, you know, two, three, four bucks, you know, depending on if you're doing weekly, monthly, et cetera. I mean, yeah, everything adds up and it's a tough economy, but we're talking about a few dollars at the end of the day, uh, you know, so. I think it is what it is. Go to the grocery store, everything is more expensive. I think it's reasonable that this is going to be more expensive too, and I think it just is what it is.
Amen.
Willie, on there he says no motion needed on this. So it's just, you want to know what the feel of the council is on this before you go forward or anything?
Right. I, uh, I need to know candidly whether this plane is going to take off. So it looks like I, I sense that there is enough direction to present a, um, a resolution at the future meeting to move forward with this as stated. If there's, if that's the sense you're getting as well mayor, then I will work with Melanie on what those specific pieces look like.
Any counselors, have you had the further comment? Any further comment from the counselor? Will?
All right. I've got my direction. I will work with Melanie.
Thank you. American Rescue Plan, uh, Kate?
Good evening. Um, this agenda item is a follow-up from our last commission meeting, um, council meeting, forgive me. Where the city of Madras, I was going to recap what the ARPA funds were, uh, for the city of Madras. That said, um, the city of Madras in total received 1.66 million dollars in ARPA funding. And you're, well, expended to date since 2020 is 1.1 million dollars with an estimated unallocated funds of 261,220. In that I included a table of where those funds, um, were originally appropriated, what is extended and what those remaining appropriations are. The only remaining appropriations include the warming shelter, um, where we've expended out of the 300,000, 50,000, 558, leaving appropriations of 249,442. And if you scroll down to the second page, we recently received approval to appropriate $44,000 for four leased police vehicles. Leaving the unappropriated, um, unallocated balance of 261,200. And I know I tried to capture as much history as I could being fairly new. I did receive some input from Jeff and Neighbor Impact, uh, Andrew from Neighbor Impact, just on where we were on the warming shelter. But this is where I see we're standing right now.
So the 44,000 has, for the police vehicles has not been, has not come out of the ARPA fund yet, correct?
Not yet. Yeah, it's not expended yet.
It is, it is going to.
Yes.
And is there a timeline on us spending this money?
There's a timeline on appropriating it, which is December 31st, 2024 and spending it by the end of 2026.
Sorry, can you say that one more time? We need to do what by the end of this year? We need to allocate it?
Yes, you need.
Okay, appropriate. Okay. I didn't, just, just that one word. Okay. But, okay.
And I know neither Will nor Kate probably has this history, but council, maybe you guys will remember on the J Street, didn't we opt to not fund that with ARPA and rather utilize OTIB loan because it's like a stupid low interest rate and we're making money off of it?
Yeah, it's funny you should say that because Mr. Hurd has the information.
Yeah, you can't buy down debt with ARPA funds. That's what they told us when Rose and I went back and looked at it. So we had already pulled a certain amount of debt and we, that's how they started it. And so we looked at doing it that way. I said we couldn't do that.
So is the strategy to kind of go into our budget season and keep this money kind of in the back of our head is if there's any unfunded priorities with the council, we can throw this at it. We just have to make this, obviously the time to do that would probably be during budget season unless, you know, some sort of emergency or surprise comes up by the end of the year. But so we'll just move forward and if there's something we want to throw it out, we'll throw it at that. So, okay.
The other thing was, wasn't there numerous requests that council brought? This was during Christie. Being here, I remember her bringing a list of like four or five items that were like wishlist items from staff and potential projects that we could put the money towards. I don't remember what any of those projects were or whether we would be interested in putting this money towards them.
Were you thinking community grant requests that could come out of these funds or just any different random projects that came up?
No, it was, yeah, it was different random projects and it was before we, um, stopped the like large 16 million dollar project. And so there was some discussion about whether we wanted to put some of the ARPA money towards that project as a whole for roundabouts and the lights and all that.
Yeah, that was, um, Counselor Sles, that's what Jeff Hurd and I discussed. He actually had a report, um, that he wrote up back then, um, that referenced those specific, um, land use projects. And so, uh, you don't have to make a decision in any of this now, but it will be certainly recapped on the 18th when we meet as a group. Because we have some recommendations for the one. Because we have some recommendations for the one-time expenditures of ARPA dollars, and we can bring back some of those street projects, and I believe the only reference I could find councillor Slade is to road projects. And that's what, uh, Jeff Hurd had shared with me. And we can certainly get that back out to you. It was a staff report written a few months ago.
I felt like it had been more that it was more than just the road projects and that it was it it could have been the body cams that was part of that. I don't know.
And they are on our list to discuss next week on anything.
I would just say that if staff can, you know, look around and look for those, it sounds like Will's already got you guys working on it to bring those wishlist items that, like, hey, these are one offs that you can throw your money at. That way we can have each shiny thing and then make a decision as council of which one we wanna grab.
Okay. All right. Like I said, councillor Slade, I'll go back and see if I can find anything outside of road projects, but I couldn't find anything. But if you can come back and and let me know.
Yeah, and nowhere is if you can't find it, just as long as you guys bring different things.
Oh, yeah, we have different things, yeah.
Wanna see like those different asks, because then we as council get to decide which are the shiny things we really want.
Absolutely, and that's what Will had for you.
Well, and I
Note shining.
I think there may have been something said, too, with the code enforcement officer, maybe some extra money that they need to get rid of some of the garbage and things. I don't know, but that was.
And that's part of what we're bringing forward to you. Um, not to steal the thunder, but we're looking at body cams, police cars, one-time expenses is what we're really looking at, things that we know that we will exercise those costs, um, by the end of twenty six. So there there is some different things being presented that next week. If that encourages you to show up early for prizes or anything, so.
All right, any further discussion on this? Thank you. Discussion on community grants, Will.
Okay, this'll be, uh, uh, our new finance director is going to work with me on this, but we sat down, and as you recall, in a previous meeting, had a discussion about community grants. We're still in interest to do the community grants. And so the applications have been released. There are boxes that you can check it for social or economic. And then, um, then the the goal before it would be kind of three questions for you folks to be able to answer is, do you want to fund the community grants at the same level that you did for this fiscal year? And that was roughly a hundred and forty five thousand dollars. And then the next question is, do you want to dive divide it up? Because there was a question that you folks asked about social component and economic. And so, uh, we provided you a recommendation based on what we allocated for this fiscal year. And then the last question is, do you wish as an as a group to have the, um, grantee agencies come before you, because we are switching it up. If you recall, in years past, they would come before the budget committee, and the budget committee would make a decision. I have decided, um, if you hate the idea, it actually came from Kate, but I decided that that it would should really be the city council that makes a decision on where to appropriate those funds, not the budget committee. And so that it would come before you for your consideration. So, um, those are kind of the three questions that we have tonight that are in within the staff report. And then Kate can ask her, answer the financial questions, and I can ask her some of the substantive questions that you may have. So we're just looking for some directions, so that way we can post on the website what the kind of amount we're looking at. Because what we don't wanna do is we don't want people to think that there's five hundred thousand dollars out there, and then we get a whole bunch of applications, but we could also be silent on that amount as well, but just knowing that's what we're looking at allocating as well. I'm sorry, that's throwing a lot at you, but we can take them one at a time if you prefer.
So if we throw the hundred and forty five thousand five hundred at it, do we still have enough in the TED funds to allocate towards an edco position?
We are anticipating that we do. The TRT transfer from general fund is estimated to go up ten percent. So it's gonna be around three hundred and sixty three thousand. So we are looking okay in that fund right now, the proposal we're building.
I don't have a problem with throwing this dollar amount at it or splitting it out as staff are recommending. I think that there's more work to do for us to really define what council believes is economic development versus social service. I think that that's something to work on over the next year, so that next year it's really dialed in. But I'd also say that the grants that come in, any applications at a future work session or council meeting should come before us and present rather than the budget committee.
Aren't we all the budget committee anyway?
We're part of the budget committee.
Correct. I just see that there being some pros and cons to having others involved that are active in our community, maybe presenting a different idea outside of the social norms that we're all within.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. I think that it's outside the scope of what a budget committee is supposed to be in Oregon government finance. They're really supposed to approve the appropriations, so in a budget committee meeting, we should be bringing to them saying, hey, we wanna spend a hundred and forty five thousand five hundred dollars on community grants. Do you say yes or no? And then they could be like, eh, up it or lower it. But the actual decision of then of that hundred and forty five, how we're spending it, which, whether it's applicant A or applicant B, is really more of a council policy decision, not a budget committee decision.
Then feeding off of that, I know that there has to be a discussion on if we're gonna continue to fund the chamber, the number that we've been doing before we get to community grants.
Yeah, let me jump in here, say a couple of things. So I think this is hard, because a hundred and forty five thousand five hundred is just like in a vacuum. So if I, I I think we need to make a strategic decision, and I'll just tell you where I'm at. So I know there was kind of some discussions among staff the last few months. Should we cut this? Should we modify it? We've got all these other costs, like some of our homelessness cleanup is adding up. So for me, just to say yes, you know, I woke up this morning wanting to spend a hundred and forty five thousand five hundred on community grants, it's a bit arbitrary. So to me, i- it, the question is, as opposed to what? Like, what's the opportunity cost? What other things can we be spending this money on? Because otherwise, it's hard not to say yes, you know, of course. But, you know, so I I think that's the part of the equation I'm missing is, as I said, I felt like there was some whispers about, should we cut this? We have some other financial concerns, but we never actually set the strategic decision. Do we wanna cut this and allocate it to more pressing financial needs or not? So I think we need to make that decision. And further to to Jennifer's point, you know, we went through the whole process with the city county, we talked about reevaluating the chamber, and now here we are just kind of memory holding that entire arc, which was the will of the council, that we were gonna reevaluate our relationship with the chamber, we're just going reverting back to the old, the old budgeting amount. So I'm not happy with that. I'm not at this point willing to support that amount. I think we, you know, that process apparently stalled. Nobody took ownership, I guess, and and we didn't really have a plan. So we just kind of all agreed we wanted to reevaluate it, but then we didn't actually make a plan of action to actually evaluate it. And now it stalled for several months, and now we're just kind of going back. So for all those reasons, I I I think the right discussion is, you know, what other, what other things can we do with the TED fund? Can we do homelessness cleanup? Can we do some of these other things? What are the opportunity costs? And what are we trading off? Are there any things that we have shortfalls on? I think that's where where the most fruitful conversation is.
To answer your question, councillor Sebel, is first off, it's my recommendation, because there's a new chamber director, that for the, for this next year, and it's just, that's as far as a commitment I would recommend, is that you keep the funding the same to give the individual a chance. Because you're asking a new director to come in, given three to five months to figure out and get out and try to market to businesses, create a funding source. I think it's a challenge for that. So it is a recommendation of the county as well as the city that we keep the funding level, at least administration, not talking council, administration, that you keep the funding levels the same for twenty four, twenty five. After that, it's a free game to decide what you wanna do. With respect to the opportunity costs, Kate and I and others have been keeping track of what some of your asks are, and we feel like we can accommodate those with it. So we will discuss it further, what some of those things are on the eighteenth. So if you wish to wait and table this, we're not looking for, there's no action item associated with this. If you wish to wait until sometime in April, we don't have to post what we're doing. We still have the grant applications out there. This is affecting the fiscal year that starts July one, so there is time. So if if you wanna discuss it further as a group, set up some other, uh, work session to discuss this, we can certainly do that. Um, I have no idea where the interests lie right now in the grants, but I can tell you that there's been a bunch of organizations calling, asking about it. So, um, it's up to you what you wanna do. If you decide you don't wanna put some funding behind it, we should probably let folks know sooner than later. But if you choose that, hey, we do wanna put some funding, just not sure the amount, we can certainly wait. I just hate to have a bunch of people go through the effort filling out an application when there isn't something there.
No, I I agree, and and my answer is definitely not zero, so I do wanna put some funding, but I personally think it's a cart horse thing. I'd like to integrate this more into the greater budget process, because I, you know, otherwise we're just picking a number in a vacuum. So I I would like to see, you know, oh, we're, you know, we have other priorities and other other departments that can use the right fund, the TED fund, and just kind of see which Peter we're robbing to pay which Paul, so that we have some greater context. So we know it's actually, otherwise, yeah, we just don't know. We're just making up a number. So I will say this, you probably have more up-to-date information than I do, so I don't doubt what you're saying for a second, but I, last time I talked to Jeff and the county commissioners, they were not sold on fully funding, um, the chamber, but that was a couple of weeks ago, and maybe they've made that decision, so. Yeah.
Okay, well, if that was a sense I got from Mr. Asmuson, I will confirm that on Friday.
I I wanna also say, I think that it's painful it is for me to agree with him. Yes. It's hard for us to assign a number
I hate all the time.
I know, because we've seen too many things like body cams and other things in other departments not happen when, yes, we wanna con- continue to help the community, but it's important that we make sure that the police department and other services are. So I, I'm in favor of the community grants, absolutely, but I also would say let's not put a number to it.
If I can speak for the, for the chamber, there, the new director's doing phenomenal, phenomenal work and and changes that needed to be made. I would give her that extra year, though, for the chamber, that extra year of what we're paying out now, allow them to stabilize and let their new plans come taking effect. She's got some great ideas that can help bring in some extra money, but I know I'm not the only one here who knows that there's other communities paying a lot less for the chamber than we are, but I think before we start making any modifications, give them a chance to get off their feet.
If you guys put in, I mean, I I've 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 met the new, uh, chamber director. I really like her. I've actually met with her several times privately, one-on-one. I have a lot of confidence in her, so I definitely feel good about the hire. I feel like you guys are going in the right direction, absolutely. But to your point, have you guys created any measurable metrics to how you define success? That was one of our main problems, is, you know, how do we define success? So I I have no doubt that she is moving the ball in the right direction, but I just don't know how you're tracking the success of that that progress.
Well, right now, I'm able to have more than five thousand dollars in the bank at the end of the year. I think it's a, it's a good measure right there. So a- and I'm speaking very frankly and candidly about it, but there there was some, there's some very eye-opening things coming about their financial reports and of that, and of that nature, that have really been kind of discouraging for the board. So the fact that things are now changing in the direction that she's pushing it, and for the idea about she's, she's got these great ideas about different membership levels and all these other kind of things. There's, there's, there's businesses that haven't even been built for their membership. So there's a lot of lot of cleaning up that needs, that's that's happening right now over there. And so that's all I'm asking, just give them that opportunity for them to clean house and get back on the, on their solid feet. But she's, she's done a lot of homework as far as what other chambers are doing and how we can assimilate to those kind of cultures and whatnot, and so it's just I'll put it this way, the chamber board's been meeting every two weeks instead of the normal meeting timeframe, and um, they're, they're not even close to going back to one meeting a month yet, so yeah, give it, give us, give us some chance.
Yeah, no, I appreciate all your hard work and you've been putting into this, Mayor, and I know that she was doing things like redoing the website, which I strongly support, so I I do have optimism that it's going in the right direction. I do support her fully, so I I do want you and her to know that.
Thank you, council. Any other discussion on this?
Yes.
Please.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, one thing that I would like to say is I think it's really important for us to focus on the money that makes the city more money. So take for instance, like, the airport, um, the chamber, if things are getting better there, wanna watch that to see what happens. But I would be a lot more in favor of giving our airshow more money than what I would maybe a social event in town, and just typically, because that airshow, I talked with Rick Allen, and I believe he said they spend thirty to forty thousand dollars in a year just advertising the airshow. So the amount of money that they make, the amount of money that that's brings in to the City of Madras, I think is pretty substantial when it comes to hotels, the different um, amenities that people use, just simply because of the airport and, or because of the airshow. Airport and airshow are same thing almost, but anyways. But that's what we're known for, and I think as we kind of help get the snowball rolling on that, I think we can definitely make a much bigger a much bigger airshow up there. And I mean, Hillsborough, we all know what Hillsborough is. I always think of the airshow because that's where we used to always go as a kids. But when I come over here, I think about this airshow, the museum, and then the other possible amenities that we might add up there. I would, I would like to see us put more money into that to actually help support the, our Madras community than just trying to do a lot of these social things that maybe bring more, I don't know, bring maybe not so good of results.
If I'm not mistaken, the fund was for economic development and growth. And although many of the things that we support on there are not economic development and growth, so I would, um, recommend maybe funding those out of something else and using this, because I think we lost our way over the years and and, uh, being good-hearted, we would let some of the economic growth money go into a social thing that may that probably isn't gonna, some of them do not bring economic development like the fund was intended for. So I'd like to see us not ignore the others, uh, you know, but not take it out of the Economic Development Fund as it was originally intended.
So is that enough guidance for you, Will? We definitely, I think, I don't think anybody here wants to do zero, so we wanna do some funding. Maybe we don't lock in the number at this point, and we integrate it more into our budget process, so we can see kind of what other options are with those funds, and then maybe commit to a number later in the budget process. Does that work for you?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, we're not actually ratifying the budget till May, June anyway, so there is flexibility in that, but there are things that I just want, if if, if if you really wanna make a dramatic change, now would be the time to notify us, so we can notify the grantees, but if you feel like there's still a strong interest in this, we can work this through, because, um, applications aren't due for a while anyway.
We are still requiring them to report back on their prior year's expenses, correct? Okay.
Correct, yes. Yeah.
That's actually a very good point, Jennifer. I do think we need to, we haven't done a good job at this. There's been some groups that will get the money and then not do that step, that Jennifer just referenced, and then just ask for the money the next time. I think we need a cultural shift that if they don't bother to come back and do that back-end reporting, they're ineligible the next year. You know, that way they're, they're honoring the full process.
This works perfect, thank you.
Everybody good?
Okay, move on to the last one, resolution number zero three dash two zero two four. Nick?
Yes, so we're bringing this somewhat unusual resolution to you. Really, uh, for two reasons. One, under, uh, RS chapter two two two, under withdrawal, uh, requirements for taking land out of the city limits. There are specific actions that need to be taken uh, by the city to withdraw land from the quote territory. And, um, the second reason I'm bringing this resolution to you is because I missed those requirements during the annexation proceedings. So, um, the the council has approved a change to your city limits related to the Yaro UGB swap. a change to your city limits related to the Yaro UGB swap, you'll recall. And when I talked with the city attorney Garrett about preparing the appropriate adopting ordinance, just going through the notice requirements, checking all the requirements have been met, we noticed that we've missed this requirement. So what will, what would happen if you approved the resolution this evening is number one, you're going to hold a couple of public curients on this. And you're, you're in effect saying, yes, we do want to remove this land from the city limits. I believe you in effect already did that, but this clearly through a series of additional meetings coming would, would document that you've met the legal requirements, ORS Chapter 222, 460. And so that is the purpose of this resolution. It's really arcane. And some of the steps that you're going to go through probably aren't gonna are going to seem just really odd, but that is the requirements, that is the guidance from the city attorney to absolutely make sure that when we change this boundary, we've met all the requirements and that someone can't come back and, and challenge that because we didn't follow the procedural requirements or the statutory requirements. So that's, that's the reason for the resolution this evening.
Do you have any questions, comments?
I move that the city council approved resolution number 03-2024 as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Two nouns. Thank you, Nick. Yeah, we're moving along. Right. Okay, let's go on down to round table. Counselor Townsend.
Sorry, I got nothing. I'm just gonna say thank you for everybody's attention to detail and not looking forward to budget season, but we can do this.
You're not looking forward to budget season?
I know that you are, but I am not.
Counselor Sebel.
Not much to report. I just want to thank Will for all your hard work. I feel really good about the leadership we have in the city. And I appreciate all the department heads. I think Kate, you're doing a great job so far. So really appreciate you being on the team, Nick, Jeff, Tom, Kelly, everybody's awesome. So great job, team. I think City of Madras is going great. So I feel really good about it. So thank you, guys.
Counselor Solis.
I do have an update, actually. I reached out to Andrea with CYC to discuss the issues that we are having with the bus stops. Both the one over next to Safeway and the one right over here outside of City Hall. And received an email back from her with a few updates. They have added to their budget to increase the security services through their security company, which is Compass Security. And they are just struggling with hiring the personnel for it. So as Compass is able to hire for that, we'll see increased security. And so they do communicate regularly with their security company, and they do have armed officers occasionally coming out and going through. And apparently, when that happens, everybody kind of falls in line and the behavior kind of slows down and stops. And then after a short period, it all just picks right back up because the security isn't constantly there to monitor and take care of it. It sounds like CYC has been working very closely with Madras PD in terms of documentation and sharing information, building up case files. I know that the executive director of CYC is also working with Bobby Bruno from the tribes to see if there's any action from the tribe side of things to assist with some of the issues that we're having. And I know that they're having a meeting mid-March with tribal council to address the issue. And so I'll hear back from them after that meeting, see what comes from that. She apologizes for not much concrete progress. They would have liked to have seen more, but it's just an ongoing issue that we're trying to figure out how to take care of. There have been conversations about moving the bus stop. It sounds like at this point they're looking at adding a location next to the homeless services center. And that could potentially lead to removing the location outside of Safeway. I know there's some concerns with that because ODOT funded it, so I don't know the process there, but I know the conversation is still being had on that front. So we'll continue looking through that. I had one other item connected to that, but it is escaping me, so.
Thank you for the follow up.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Counselor Yoder.
Nothing to report, but I want to say that I appreciate the police following up on a number of items that I've called in and it got taken care of. So I just appreciate it, but I appreciate also the work that everyone else is doing here at the city. It's I know it's a lot of things, a lot of hoops that we all have to jump through, so, but it's appreciated. It doesn't go unnoticed.
Counselor Walker.
Well, we had a city, the Public Works and Urban Forestry meeting, and we got some things ironed out there. We're going to have a celebration on Arbor Day, and we're going to have some kids plant some trees and, and we're going to fulfill our obligation as a Tree City USA. And it should be fun and let you know more when it, it's going to be, I'm going to plant the trees on Arbor Day. But we also have a a poster contest, so you'll see posters up here again from the kids in Metolius and the elementary school here in Madras. And that should be fun. Other than that, thanks staff for doing a great job and taking care of this city and doing things that we don't see every day that might not be fun, but need to be done. Appreciate it.
Chief Plummer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate your kind words. I'm always not one to be short on reporting, so I'm going to just go kind of quickly if I can. A lot of things since we last met. Couple of things I wanted just to jump right in real quick is the Homeless Resource Committee or meeting that Steve Webb is champion is making some progress, and they're getting a plan in place for us to be able to start stepping in to that enforcement effort. Lot of moving parts to it, a couple of things that we're working with from Jeff Heard's shop, our shop, all the other community outreach and service providers. So that when we really start to make this move, it's not a big shock and awe to those folks that are being moved yet. They'll know that we're, we are moving them. And so that, that's, that's in the works right now. Just something else that's going on just from, from logistics for we're upgrading to what's called a tweet, a P25 radio system. The mayor's aware that it's digital, moving from analog to digital. We're being, our radios are going to be programmed. They're scheduled to be programmed on the 20th of this month, 21st. They're going to go live with the digital. They'll be running both analog and digital for a year in order to make sure that they have all the digital issues worked out of the system. So that's coming, which will be kind of exciting for us. The e-citation project, most of all, the backend licensing or permissions that have to be branded in order for us to use the CEGIS highway as those things are, those hurdles are over. So they've also are working on the backend to be able to have that communications from it's kind of a shoot, an offshoot, for lack of a better way of describing it, from the appellate court. The appellate court is the one that set the bail schedule for all the fines. So that information also has to flow in so that it will auto populate what the bail schedules are for those. So that is the process that's going on right now on the backend is to upload all that. So all the statutes are in there. They're all accurate. They're all current. As you can imagine, that every time we have a legislative session, if they're addressing anything in the criminal code or in the traffic code, that stuff has to be refreshed. So those communication conduits are being set up now so that when the PD doesn't have to actually go in and manually adjust all of those statutes, they're done and they're uploaded in a software update. So that's, that's the stuff that's moving on in the backend of that. Couple of other things, we are working diligently, the, the end of the year, the it's called for the uniform criminal report system, stuff that we have to do on stop data. All that's been collected and most of it is sent in, and we're making those deadlines. So that stuff is getting passed on to where it needs to be. Couple of other things, we're working on policy updates, continuous work on that. Some of the training that's on our calendar, as we talked about employee development, succession planning and development, just coming up. Just in probably the next 60 days, we are looking at an toxalyzer 8,000 standardized field sobriety test update. We have some people coming from the Oregon State Police Mobile Response Team and the Joint Terrorism Task Force to do crowd control. For those of you who weren't aware of it, because it was really well handled by our officers, we had the Palestinian folks back in town again this last weekend having a little demonstration down the highway. So we had one driving complaint where they were running stoplights, so we addressed that. And so they're not doing that anymore. We shared that love with Redmond. We sent him on down the road. We have some trauma informed training coming up. Firearms is scheduled for next week. Our TASER training is on the schedule, so our new TASERS and transitions to that. We're looking for some instructor development training so that our officers can receive training on, on the proper way and the delivery system for adult learning. So we're, we're doing that. Body cam, as Will pointed out, we have one bid already confirmed in. We have two meetings for demos tomorrow and the next day, so we should have three actual perspectives. So that's why we're kind of not, we're kind of, kind of slow walking this so we can get a really good idea of what is going to be the best, best fit for the, the PD and also a real, more true dialed in price for that point. Let's see, what else? I think that's a lot, kind of enough. The other thing that just happened recently is Sergeant Elder and Sergeant Webb just came back from a leadership conference, because we're talking about, you know, developing our people, helping them build their leadership skills. One, something on a side note, just so you know, I just received an email this afternoon that Brently Foster has accepted a job with the Department of Justice in Eugene. Her last day is going to be April 5th. So if you see her, congratulate on her. That's a big step. It's really pretty cool. She'll be joining another number of other prestigious people that have helped us out with some of the things that we've, you know, they provide us some counsel, which is really a good thing. So anyway, I think that's about it, Will. Did I miss anything? Maybe?
Well, you had, I don't know if you brought up the two graduates, and you have a new detective now.
I know. It's amazing. Yeah, Ryan accepted the opportunity to be a detective, so we can kind of move Steve towards at either an administrative position altogether. He keeps threatening to retire. I keep telling him he can't. Not till I can say he can. So anyway, that's what he's doing, and Ryan has just taken a hold of that. DA's office is happy with what he's doing, so our office, other constituents that he serves as far as child crimes, crimes against women and victims, all the things that Steve was doing. So it's good to have Steve here to walk him up into that position. So yeah, and our graduates made it out. Saw all that stuff out on social media. They're excited to be here. Oh, man, they're so tired of cafeteria food. That's not their biggest complaint. They're just glad to be riding. But in about five weeks, they're going to be tired of having an FTO sitting in the right front seat with them, telling them what to do. So it's all a process. So anyway.
I did want to say one thing. This, earlier this week, my wife and I had to actually call 911. We, we heard somebody, it was about 11 o'clock at night. We heard somebody in distress outside screaming, walking down the street, and we didn't know what was going on. So thought better to be on the side of caution. So we called 911, was very impressed. The officer was there with like, within a minute or two, they were able to locate the person, make sure they weren't in distress. They called us back and let us know that everything had been resolved. So it's a very professional experience. I told the officer I felt safer knowing they were on the road, so I did want to draw that it was a very positive experience, and I was impressed.
Good, thank you. And that's some of the things that we're really trying to push them is because of those MDTs, you need to be available for these calls. You need to be responsive. Oh, one other thing I just forgot, just remembered. I just had a meeting the other day with St. Charles Medical Group. We are looking at putting conscript together for active shooter scenario training at the facility in Madras. The person who's organizing it does all their campuses. So Primeville, we're going to be reaching out to Shane Wilson, their acting chief over there, and have them, we're actually thinking to do ours first, maybe. It's just all a matter of timing. We'll either go watch them or they'll come watch us, and we can make some adjustments to the training. But so just so you know that one of these days after 5:00, after the clinic closes, we're going to do an active shooter drill right inside that clinic. So that'll be exciting.
We met with some of that team earlier today, and I was pleased to hear they actually can have mulled out patients. So I'm expecting this will be a better event than last time.
But we put, Mayor, we put some perimeters around it saying, look, this can either be a two hour event or it could be four hour. How deep into the well you want to go? How big do you want to make it? Because if it looks anything like what happened at the high school, they're like, oh, yeah. Said that took all day. So.
Of course, you know the hospital's going to go on lockdown.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
I brought that up to the medical director. He just, oh.
Thank you, Chief. Kate?
Yes, beyond budget, we're, we're working on closing the books for February. We're very close. Teams working with the FBO on dual reports and reconciliations. We're also working on the MRC cash flow analysis and updating that for a meeting tomorrow with DA Davidson. Sitting in on interviews for HR tomorrow. Have one team member participating in that as well. Really scheduling time with directors and getting our budgets in line and preparing for the work session on Monday. It's kind of high level, not as chatty.
Way to call them out. Thank you. Jeff?
So it's getting close to construction season, so projects are starting up. The airport apron project, we started out on that today, so they've started tearing up the apron. They're going to be doing this in a couple of different phases, so plan is this should be done just right after 4th of July, and so things should be on, on the track to move forward on everything. We're also starting our access road up there that goes over the Gila Base, and the contractor that we were having put the markers in, he's just about wrapped up. And so then he's, turns out he's going to be the same contractor who does access road, so he's going to jump over and do that. We've got our Phase 3-4 for the Gila Base. It's out for bid right now. And bids are due back, I believe, sometime here in March. Then our 10th Street paving project, hopefully I'll have that out for our bid here at the end of this week to go out. I've got the plans. We've got the RFP put together. We're just going back on forth on a few minor changes to finalize the plans. Then we'll be advertising for a fueling RFP for the airport, because our five year contract's up and we've been on extension, so we'll be going out for a new fueler. And then at the next meeting, we should have, we'll have our award for our cart path paving. Willowbrook Park, this is an interesting one. So Willowbrook Park, we were dedicated those, that 2.7 acres up there for a park. We put in the irrigation, and then this year we were going to be planting and putting in the trees. Well, Monta Vista, who's the home builder, wants to get that done sooner rather than later. And so what we've done is we've kind of worked out a deal to where they're going to do it for us, and we're going to credit them some SDCs, some parks SDCs, so they're going to get it done really quick. And so that'll get established for us. So you'll see an agreement coming on the next meeting for that. Warming shelter. We're going to be paving warming shelter next week, so that road gets paved out. And there's the painting still left to do, and weather's turning, so they're, they're trying to schedule the painter in to take that. And then the last thing to do on there is the fence. We're going to put a fence around. And then, then we'll be all done. So hopefully by end of March, that project's kind of wrapped up. And then the last thing I was going to tell you guys about is the students, the Japan students are coming, March 20th through the 24th. So we'll have five kids and a chaperone coming from Tomy. They'll be, they show up Wednesday night, we pick them up. They go to high school for a couple of days, and then we take them on a tour on Saturday. They'll be, they show up Wednesday night, we pick them up, they go to high school for a couple of days and then we take them on a tour on Saturday. And then Sunday night is the farewell dinner of which Kelly's has sent you the invite. Sorry, but you got to come in on a Sunday night and for them to give you a presentation about Tomy and I'll have some good food there. Yeah, there's really good food, but, but part of their thing with the exchange is the, the students like to come and present to the dignitaries, yes, the dignitaries, so they're going to come impress you.
Is it going to be Zoom? I'm actually going to be out of the area.
We can make a Zoom option.
I would appreciate that because I'd like to be able to zoom in and watch and participate in that.
Yeah, we can set that up.
Appreciate it, thank you.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Jeff. Nick?
Yeah, got a couple of things to update you on. First, we had a kickoff meeting for our housing action plan and homelessness, homelessness report this week on, at your April, April eighth council meeting. I'll be providing an overview of the project and confirm that the public outreach strategy is in keeping with the council's expectations. Moving over to our enforcement of our camping regulations, we purchased a shipping container, FATMA and our code enforcement officer, our coordinating with Public Works and the shelter manager to cite that and prepare our second campsite location. And then at your May thirteenth council work session, I'll be giving you and others, we're giving you an update on our enforcement of those camping regulations and how we see that kind of rolling out and what our experience at that time has been. So we're, we're making some nice progress in that regard on the enforcement. Lastly, in terms of the industrial site, we have Business Organ, they have a special group of staff related or focused on industrial land development. And so they are touring all the industrial land throughout central Oregon next week. And so on the twenty-first, and so Madras is the last stop. And so we're working with, of course, John Stark at EDCO and our team here at City Hall and the airport for that tour, touring them of the bender and then city and county property in and around the airport. I understand they'll be touring all day, so we're going to give them a box lunch, at least they'll be somewhat happy and maybe remember Madras a little bit more. But the last thing related to Business Organ and industrial lands is we did receive a sixty thousand dollar grant from this Business Organ to update the industrial site readiness plan. Remember that the, the county approved, well, I asked the county for twenty thousand dollars in matching funds. The city, through community development, Public Works will provide twenty. So expect in the coming council meetings, formal authorization of, of that city funding and the, there's, there'll be a grant agreement with Business Organ coming on that. That, that update of that plan is going to update all of the infrastructure planned for the industrial area and airport. We're also going to add a land use element to it so we understand or we make sure our infrastructure is going to support the intended land uses that we want up there. You know, data centers, advanced manufacturing, things like that. That has already started me to reach out to our partner agencies, in particular the Streets, Valley Water and our power companies and starting to bring it to their attention that, hey, we will need your help on speaking in this plan and helping us understand what is needed over time. Pacific Power is making some very significant distribution and transmission improvements. It'll come online in the next five to ten years. So Mad, the region manager said Madras is some of the most gained from those improvements. So we want to make sure this plan is up to date in terms of our vision for that area and, and so that when a developer comes and says, hey, I want, you know, whatever development, we can very easily articulate what those requirements are and timelines. That's all I have for you.
Thank you, Nick. Will?
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. A couple of things, next meeting, staff is presenting a calendar for you of all the upcoming work sessions and agenda items that we're seeing as we process through the remainder of this fiscal year and in part of next fiscal year. So that will help you get a sense of what's coming up. If there are topics of interest to you that you'd like to see a work session on, please reach out. We'll do what we can to accommodate those and do the research, et cetera, that we need. As part of that, I really appreciate the feedback. I met with the mayor and two council members on an issue and it was really, really helpful for me to understand your perspective on it. So feel free to stop by. Madras has a new mascot, his name is Blue. And he, it would be certainly, he's, he's working towards stepping out of his shell. But the eighty-pound lab I'm adopting from Rockin Easy has been there for over four hundred days. So he's not really used to people, but he is very, very mellow and people love him. So stop by, offer a treat, have a conversation, we always appreciate the feedback. I'm working on Kate with a budget. It's a very different process than's happened in the past. I certainly appreciate all of your feedback with respect to, we don't want to see a clearly defined budget in front of us, we want to help shape it. So bear that in mind as we have a discussion on the eighteenth, that there's still some pieces that haven't been totally refined because our goal is to really work with you on your priorities. Now that we understand what they all are, we're going to hopefully work with you towards ranking them from a priority perspective. So as we look for resources, as we try to decide how far we can go with different things, we really want to hear from you on what those key priorities are so we can make sure with the limited resources we have, we do as many of those key priorities as we can. Had a really interesting conversation with the manager of Safeway. We talked a lot about the houselessness folks and the two things that were really interesting for him was, one, he says, if you could help me find a better location for the bottle drop, that really is causing some challenges for my customers. They don't feel comfortable walking in on that one side of the business. And candidly, that is propagating a lot of activity from the houselessness within that location there. So Nick took the initiative today and reached out to a industrial site landowner to see if we can create some opportunities there. The other one is really interesting, he says he can time when he's going to get shoplifted by when the buses come by. So we're going to work on some of the aspects with regards to the bus stop. The chief and I have had a conversation when we can, because there is still a lot of activity in town, have an officer there at certain times to just encourage folks to pay for their product. So we will work that through. Outside of that, I'm still working on refining the strategic goals, so I hope to get those out to you sometime next week. And then the last council meeting of the month, Nick and I will be remote because we're going to be at the Oregon City Managers Conference in Seaside. So we will be definitely online. Thank you.
Kelly?
All right. So first thing is League of Oregon Cities Conference. The mayor was the only one so far to confirm that he's going, so his stuff is reserved and booked. And so just a reminder to the rest of you, it's April twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, which is two days in Clamath Falls. And the deadline to register is April fourth, so I would need to know before then if you guys are going to attend. Contract management's going really well.
Can I ask a question about that? So if, if we want to attend, how does that work? Like, is it overnight presumably?
It is because of the, the conference starts at eight AM, I believe, on that Thursday. And so we would book a room Wednesday night and Thursday night with the intention of coming home Friday.
Okay, is it each room per counselor? Are we sharing rooms to save costs? How does all that work?
Per counselor.
Well, I, I'm just, that's what I assumed, but I'm also trying to be fiscally responsible, that's why I framed it that way.
You can sleep out on the balcony.
Is that a double queen or one king?
If you can fit the queen on the balcony, have her.
Purely your preference when you check.
This went a little wild. So if you'd like to attend, message me privately and we'll discuss that. Contract management's going really well, we have a hundred and seventy contracts in the system now. And it's actually been a really good, as another staff member said, kind of an audit because it has caught stuff that's just been in drawers for a while, closed files we've been able to put away as well as some that we found that have not received payment on. So that's been a really good update. You guys are going to get an updated calendar. Will said he's going to present the topic calendar out at the next meeting, but I will be sending out, because we have the budget dates, so you'll get an updated, the just all year calendar with all the meeting dates on it because there's a lot of changes. So we have some very unexpected dates coming up between Monday, the eighteenth, Sunday, the twenty-fourth. There is a work session on the twenty-fifth, there's also a council meeting on the twenty-sixth, so we'll see you three days in a row. The third is the joint city-county meeting here. And then as you guys saw, I've scheduled pictures for you, April ninth. So I know a lot of people had the date confused and thought I was springing it on you same day. And then last thing is, I don't know, if you don't follow us on social media, follow us on social media. But we opened up a photo contest as part of our website updating. And so we have four finalists that the staff have chosen. So I, I just decided to show you guys and if you'd like to take a little vote, I can tally those and include them in the finalists. But this is one of our images. This is another one, which I thought was beautiful. This one. And then this is the last one.
God, they're all good.
Yeah, they were all, we had some, it's some great, they conquered the trail. So, and that would be it for mine.
I like the last three.
Okay, hold on.
They all, they all like, no, I'm not voting for, I'm not putting a vote out there, I'm just saying why I like those last three. Those last three all showed, like, kind of, they encompassed Madras, they had a shot of Madras. Whereas that first one was not necessarily clear that it was looking at Madras. Whereas all the other ones, this one, you can clearly tell where they're at. Exactly.
Agreed. Staff kind of said the same thing is that these, I think that's why these became the finalists is you can identify, like, if you're from here, you can spot exactly where it's at.
Show the one with the snow again.
No, it's a weed. So those are our four finalists. So and then everybody that submitted photos gave us the authority to use them on any way that we want, even going forward. But we are going to select one finalist.
And I want to give a shout out to Kelly on this because she's working really hard on updating the website. You folks really want to create a unified message, improve our image, et cetera. And so she's doing that with the limited resources we have within her own schedule. So we're doing what we can with it and so I think we're making some progress. It's a lot of continued effort updating things, but the biggest thing we're doing is we're really going to tell our story rather than have other people tell our story. Council, Councilwoman Townsend really expressed it well. People have been telling our story for too long, it's time we tell our own, so.
I was impressed yesterday, those warming shelter pictures were up before it was even over, so kudos to you.
Is that it, Kelly? Thank you. I'd like to thank Kelly, Kelly, Jennifer and Will for showing up at the ribbon cutting at the shelter yesterday. It was noticed by others besides myself. It was pretty, it was very well attended, so I was happy to see that. Of course, I want to thank our dream team. I affectionately think of our staff now as, as the dream team. We got the right people in the right spots and doing great stuff. But what I really want to thank tonight is our council. So I told a couple of you, I get, I'm on that, this email chain from all the mayors in Oregon. They'll, every once in a while get these emails like, hey, what do you do if this occurs? Or how do you deal with this or that, whatever? And I've never put anything on there. I don't want to air out it early on during that kind of thing, you know, yeah, I'm not going to. And sometimes it's great for entertainment, I'm like, I can't believe what happens in this city or this city. I'm like, oh, my gosh, and I just say, I count my blessings that we don't have those issues. More recently, King City has lost their mayor and three of their six councils got recalled. So they're not, they're effectively not effective because they cannot hold a quorum. I am grateful that even though we don't always agree, we are able to work together and, and make good things happen. So council, thank you. With that, I'm done. Unless anybody else has anything else? We'll adjourn at seven fifteen.